It is seven oh one on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. I'll convene this meeting of the planning board and take uh attendance. Uh so in order of appearance, as I see him on my screen, Theo Noel.
Here.
Bill Spalding.
Here.
Matt Lowry.
Yeah.
Kevin York.
Here.
And myself as well. So all the members of the planning board are present. Uh first order of business is the approval of the June eleventh, twenty twenty four meeting minutes. Did any member of the planning board have any comments or questions regarding the meeting minutes as presented? Uh seeing no comments is can um do I hear a motion to accept the meeting minutes from June eleventh as presented?
So moved.
I saw I got Bill with the motion and Theo with the second uh roll call vote, Kevin York.
Yes.
Matt Lowry.
Yes.
Bill Spalding.
Yes.
And Theo Noel.
Yes.
So that passes. Uh so in that case, uh we can move to the uh item number three on our plan, the A and R plan associated with two sixty nine Nahat Street. Um so I understand Attorney McGrath that you are representing the applicant.
Sorry about that, I was muted. Uh yes, Mr. Chair, off the record Attorney Brian McGrath representing the uh applicant Lawrence Pizzano, the owner of two sixty nine Nahat Street. Uh this was an A and R plan that was before your board back in October. Um it's land uh registration um property, registered land property. And uh as as we've discussed, when it's registered land after your board endorses the plan, it has to go back uh to the uh engineering department of the land court uh for them to review and coordinate with the surveyor of record who was Paul Fenocchio. Was also on the meeting. Uh I know he's trying to log on to the audio and is having some problems with that. But in any event, um there were some changes at the land court plan uh land court engineering department wanted. They really just wanted the plan reoriented. They wanted the North Arrow change to coincide with their records. Um and they put Paul through a lot of work. So w- we have uh submitted a revised plan. They're at the land court engineering uh department wants that endorsed by your board before they approve it on their end, so it can go to Cambridge for recording. So there's no bounds or anything that have uh have changed.
Uh Mr. McGrath, is it possible to just uh so it was is exclusively associated with the arrow and maybe you could highlight?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask. I I've gotta have Paul get on here because I don't want to misrepresent it. He dealt directly with them, so I'm probably gonna try to dial him uh and that way he can talk because he's he can see the screen, but he's having a problem with his audio. So hang on one second if you could.
Hello.
Are you there, Paul?
I'm line. I'm not on computer. I'm on my on the phone.
Okay, so you can hear what's going on here.
I can now, yes.
Yeah.
So for the for the record, um for Paul, for the record, could you state your name and uh if you're a resident of the town of Wakefield?
Yes, Paul Fenocchio for Highland Ave. Wakefield.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Chair, I sent you an email just a minute ago because talk about technical difficulties. I'm having a problem with my Adobe. Um opening that they're they're telling my me my subscription subscribed and they're trying to hold me hostage for my credit card, so um I want to resolve that after the meeting and not now. So um if you could you possibly share that pla- plan, Jim?
Yes.
Attorney McGrath, just so you know too, you can right click on that and open it up in Chrome or another web browser usually too.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. I appreciate that.
The this is the plan uh.
That's that's the plan. So Paul, um the chair was asking if you could describe, you know, what's transpired with the land court, what they required and what, if any, changes are on the plan.
Um the main change is that the land court wanted the the uh lot be on the top of the page, so we had to orient the plan so that basically lot is at the top of the sheet. Everything else on the perimeter of the property, the lot lines and everything has stayed the same. Uh the main changes besides that not there was had to do with the worksheets and holding monumentation that we found onsite and on the abutting land court, which is behind us. And also the um layout of Nahat Street, the sort of three different layouts. And I had to go through with land court, um the engineer there to to figure out which uh monuments for holding, which the original ones on our site. So there's other than that, there's no changes to the um perimeter or the lot lines.
Do any members of the board have any comments or questions regarding this A and R plan as presented?
Uh I have no questions. Did we sent a copy of this? I didn't. I don't recall receiving one or we just going on what we were sent previously.
I sent it to the planning board uh email. And to uh Aaron and Sam and Sue.
I don't know if any other members received the copy, but I didn't.
I did not either. I didn't either.
All right, um. I I assume nothing else has changed. Um I I understand the process of going through land court. It's it's not always fun, but it's part of the job, so um. I will take it on your word that, you know, nothing has, you know, the lots haven't changed or anything besides the orientation has changed, so I assuming that I I have no issues with it. I'd like to get a copy of it before we we endorse it, just so I can take a look at it, though.
Yep, I'll email it. I'll email that tonight, Matt.
Yeah, I and I apologize if I dropped the ball on that with the balance of the board. I I thought that had gotten out to the balance of the board, but if I missed that, I apologize for the other members of the board.
No, not a problem. Um one other thing, this is this is under the same application, right? So you're not you're not refiling or anything, correct?
No, it's really odd. That's a great question, Matt. So I, you know, the the first one, there's also a um lot shape waiver involved in this. Um so I have I've submitted another uh waiver on that because this plan now has a new date, so it's important that the dates coincide on that lot shape waiver. Um I submitted, I I sent in an application because I didn't know how you guys wanted to handle that. And, you know, I would respectfully request that my client not have to um pay an additional filing fee. Uh we will if you require it, but it, you know, um um you know, he's a resident. This isn't a developer, so you know, it's really just cleaning something up, not a new plan. Um but that's that's your discretion. So um so however you want to handle it, um board members, I I don't see a need for the new application. If you were were to approve this and just to endorse this plan, you know, is basically part of the process as required by the land court. I'm fine with that.
And um to be consistent with with, you know, we've had at least one or other of these come through and yeah, it's it's something that's out of the applicant's um control that land court asked for stuff. So I I would recommend we waive the second filing fee and just in call this a continuation of the first application.
Any other members of the board have a reaction to that? Uh Mr. Spalding?
I do, and thank you for bringing up the application. That was the only thing on my list besides reviewing the plan. Um I don't feel the app applicant needs to file again, so I am fine with this one.
Do other uh Mr. Noel and Mr. York, do you guys concur?
Of course, yes.
Okay. Uh in that case, um unless anyone else disagrees, uh does it make sense for us to entertain a motion regarding this A and R plan?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to um unfortunately, I can't read the the plan, so um yeah, if you could zoom in. Uh make a motion to endorse the uh land court subdivision plan uh entitled um plan of land at uh six twenty nine Nahat Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts, Land Court Case two four three four six B dated, uh let's see, I'm sorry, August twenty third, twenty twenty three, last revised June eighteenth, twenty twenty four and to approve the um was that an additional waiver you had there?
A lot shaped waiver.
Uh and approve the lot shape waiver.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion and I'll um with a correction on the address to two sixty nine Nahat.
Okay, uh and um Matt, do you accept said revision?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, the board could also just authorize you to sign the lot waiver, so all board members don't have to sign that, just you. And then the board members would endorse the plan because that's how you've handled in the past.
So moved on that. Second.
So in that case, I'll uh take a roll call vote to endorse the plan of land at two sixty nine Nahat as detailed by Minister Lowry as well as the waiver for the shape lot irregular shape irregularity and if authorize myself to sign on behalf of the board. Um so I'll take a roll call vote, uh Theo Noel. Up Theo, you're muted.
Apologies, yes.
Thank you. Uh Mr. York.
Yes.
Uh Bill Spalding?
Yes.
Matt Lowry?
Yes.
And myself a yes, so the motion carries five to nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So to just to be clear, is it no new application is required? Um and we have the my law, so should we get that to Sam and then we can coordinate signatures through her?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, thank you. And uh for the other members of the board, I will push the a copy of the A and R uh over to the balance of the board uh and with apologies that I did not do so before this meeting. Um so with that, uh I will move to item number four items not anticipated by the chair. Do any members of the planning board have items that they would like to bring up at this time? Mr. Spalding?
I have two items, um one being our safe streets, um resident not town um group. Uh was in front of town council during public um um whatever it's called during the town council meeting. Um the plan for the bike pad that was accepted in the fall. One of the one of the projects was for North Ave and that plan was reviewed and approved to have flex posts. And they will be installed approximately in September and November, depending on the lead time of of getting those. And it's more of a trial where the where they will be in from that fall period and November fifteenth will be removed. And if all goes well, they'll be put back into place in April fifteenth and hopefully through the rest of that. And that will be in addition to the travel lanes and um the bike lane with the uh the space where the uh flex post will go. So if you want to know more about that, the town council meeting last night went into detail. Um the other item would be, and this should come up, I think, Jim, I don't know if you uh watched the town council. It did go very late. I was watching it in between game seven of the Stanley Cup. We um it was good to hear um Chair McLean. Um he missed the last meeting, but he was at this past meeting. MBAT MBTA Communities forty A, he named the subcommittee or I don't know, Sam. I don't know if you were still on at that time. I can't remember if it was called a subcommittee or just a committee. But he named Ed Dombrowski, um counselor, Ed Dombrowski, counselor Bob Vincent and himself as part of that committee that would review and move forward. So I just wanted to bring that to the board. Um and it's towards the it's probably it's probably after ten PM, maybe around ten thirty, so three and a half hours in possibly to the meeting.
Okay.
That's all.
Well, thank you for the uh for the heads up. I'm sure that we will be in communication with the town councils, see what they do or do not require for support from the planning board as part of that three A effort.
With and so was there any discussion of that or that's still TBD?
The discussion didn't move forward. It was more from the previous meeting and the chair wasn't there, so he was following up with more or less naming the committee. I don't remember any discussion. I was switching back and forth. Um yeah, I'm sorry, three A, what what's it forty A? Three A, right?
Uh it's yes, three A.
Yeah, sorry, it's been a long day. Um yeah, that was they didn't have a discussion, but if you go back to the video of their previous meeting, they did have a discussion.
Okay. Okay, uh any other items the other members of the board have?
Yeah, I oh go go ahead, Kevin.
Just a quick reminder that Thursday is the public hearing for the bylaw review committee to talk about the first slash second draft of the zoning bylaws. After that, I I should have more of an update on the path forward. Jim, I know you wanted to discuss that. Um so I should have more that I can share after that.
Kevin, do you know at the bylaw review committee, um that is to solicit um feedback from the public really regarding the draft that's published currently?
Right.
Okay, I think one of the things that we we might want to start thinking about as a board is if there is a a draft bylaw, um does it make sense for us to start some sort of process as our a planning board of reviewing that bylaw so that we could provide uh comprehensive feedback as a board um to the bylaw review committee? The reason I'm saying that is, you know, I've gone through it a couple of times or started to go through it rather, and it looks to me as if there's some changes in there that warrant feedback from the planning board. Um so I think that's one of the things. Maybe not tonight, but at one of our future meetings, I think we should get on the agenda and start thinking about how we want to address the bylaw review committee and make sure that our our voice is heard.
What was previously discussed was having a small subcommittee of the bylaw review committee chair, attorney Babrowski, and then two members of the planning board and two members of the ZBA um really go through it more thoroughly. Uh and then we could certainly have the larger group here discuss it after that, but they felt like that would be a good uh first step at getting broader feedback from those two groups who are probably most impacted by it on a a daily, weekly basis in terms of of officials throughout town.
I'd welcome other members of the planning board's feedback, but I also think that probably does make sense for it makes sense to me is if there's probably uh a mechanism where we want to make sure that we as a group connect and go through some of the the high level changes um that are being discussed. Uh you even just flipping through it a couple, the first couple of pages this week, it looks like there might have been a couple of overlays that were omitted. Like those are relatively large changes. Uh and I'm not sure if I'm just misreading it, going through it quickly, it's a very long document with lots and lots of changes. So I think they probably warrant some some way for us to organize our ru- collective review and then uh transmitted feedback to the bylaw review committee.
Yeah, I I would agree. Would it um it would seem to make sense that um maybe the this small group uh would be able to uh take take draft two in chunks and that would then lend itself to coming back to the planning board and saying, all right, we've reviewed A, B, C, and D and and get feedback. So um.
I would tend to agree so long as we can start convening that, but um I I don't know, Kevin, do you know if anyone from the bylaw review committee has reached out to ZBA to start that process?
I am not sure if Chair Lieber has.
Okay.
And Kevin, sorry to, I'm not sure if you know this, but what are the what what's the BRC, what are they looking for for a delivery or is it Springtown Meeting twenty twenty five?
That would be the earliest.
I know, I was looking through my notes. I I think that was one of the dates they were shooting for. Okay. I'm concerned, I'm most concerned that the amount of time that was put into our zoning bylaws by uh Paul Revus, our previous town planner and the amount of information that's in there that's tied to each other that if one part is changed and the rest isn't picked up, and I know that's part of the BRC's job is to go through and see how it connects into reconnect or solve it in a way to simplify. My biggest concern is in simplifying that. And no offense to Attorney McGrath or other attorneys, but I feel like it will change the process. And I don't want that process to favor um any one party. So that's something that I I just feel, I don't know how as a board we can I guess our our faith would be in that smaller committee with two members from ZBA, two members from planning board and I I I feel like there probably should be a representative from town council on there too, if possible.
So is this committee just to understand what the changes are or to actually go through them and and clarify them? Do you know what the how this is process is being set up?
To provide feedback on them. So what what the hope is i- is much along the lines of what Bill said. The the changes proposed by Attorney Babrowski to streamline, clean up the bylaws. He doesn't want them as a byproduct of that to actually get more complicated, where if there are things that have worked for Wakefield that we mess those things up as he tries to bring it in line with what he's seen as best practices in other places.
All right, so we'll want to discuss this as a group prior to this subcommittee going. So we want to have a consensus before the two representatives go and and start cashing out or clarifying or we, you know, reclarifying whatever is is on the table right now.
I think I think that it's likely that we'll want to have some sort of met, you know, time set aside for us to review as a board, you know, where we prep specific sections. And then whether or not we use the the subcommittee as a manner of transmitting the feedback back to the bylaw review committee and or using that as a mechanism to clarify some of the things as we go through that would make a lot of sense to me. You know, just for this board's information, the types of things that you know, in a very, very brief period of time, the I I started seeing things such as, you know, if we're looking at the overlay districts, as you may be able to see my screen right now. We've got multiple overlay districts that are just crossed out. So I haven't done my due diligence to go through and that figure out where did those go? But you know, if we're having things such as overlay districts being crossed out, that's where that to me feels like a material change. And again, I'm not sure if that's actually what's being proposed or if I'm missing something. Um but those are some of the things that as a board, I I would like to us to start thinking about and getting our arms around. So I would anticipate that Kevin, you and I should maybe reach out to Chair Lieber and facilitate that conversation of what he what's helpful for him. And then we should start getting some time on the for this board to start reviewing some of these sections. Maybe we take a section by section um in order to allow us to prep and then go through it as a board, so we're making sure that we're not missing things.
That sounds good to me.
Okay. Um any uh Kevin, anything else uh items that anticipated from you?
Nope.
Okay, um Theo, do you still have an item unanticipated?
Yeah, um I I have two. The the first one is just to follow up on the the board's draft letter of support for the open space and recreation plan. Um Bill and I edited it and um so um the that meeting, um town council meeting got pushed back to um July fifteenth, so um I think our next steps is for me to circulate it to Jim and Jim, you to circulate it to the the other members. Um and we can we can all sign off on it um individually and and then you can send it along. Um so um.
Yeah, the other thing is if you if you send it to the entirety of the planning board, um we have a meeting that we will beholden before the fifteenth. So on July ninth, there's already two things that I have on the agenda for that time. So we could, if you transmit that prior to that and give everyone the opportunity to review it, we can agree or make edits as required at that meeting.
Okay, all right, so I'll I'll send that out tonight. Um the um the other thing I I took the liberty of doing is uh I I started to draft a a future letter to the traffic advisory committee um in response, um trying to collate some of the the feedback we got uh during our public forums and the public hearings of about three A in terms of residents' feelings about uh traffic and parking and lack of enforcement. So I I wanted to just circulate that around and um uh because uh I think that that would be an important thing to communicate as part of uh the the second round of MBTA communities and um you know, as a as a sign of wanting to be comprehensive and responsive to the the comments we we received. So I'll I'll circulate that in addition. So I don't I don't think there's any particular timeline for that. I just, you know, when 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 we come back around to talking about three A, we um we can we can pick that up. So.
Okay.
And um um yeah, that that's it for me.
Okay. Um anyone else have any other items not anticipated? Uh Bill Spalding?
Uh one more, um actually in a question for Sam. One is um I brought up um a few meetings ago about July and August, and I just want to be proactive as our board if we won't have a quorum for any of the meetings, we should probably share that uh maybe with Susan or figure out um I'm I'm fine with the meetings throughout the summer. I don't have any conflicts.
So that actually preempts one of the things I was gonna I was gonna say. Uh so as of right now, I have items for the the uh uh July ninth meeting or currently tentatively an update for Clyde Court and Prospect Street. Um are there any members of the board that will be uh unable to attend the July ninth meeting? Um so we can make sure that we have a quorum.
I won't be able to make the July ninth meeting.
Anyone else? Okay, um and then I wanted to go through July twenty third. Uh are there any other mem- or are there any members of the board that will be able to uh be unable to attend that meeting? Okay. Um unfortunately, that one I will be unable to attend, but if that's the case, then we will still have a quorum. Um and then August, I think it's August thir- thirteenth. Does anyone have a conflict on that date?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, Susan's raising her hand.
Yep. Okay, uh and then August twenty seventh. Okay. So I think at this point, my intent would be to hold all the meetings if if it's warranted, if it's if there's anything that uh like an A and R or something that would have um need immediate impact, but otherwise, unless um other members of the board disagree. I think a number of the items that we're talking about are a longer term in nature, so my intent would be that we told the seven nine because we have Clyde Court Prospect Street closeout updates. And then we would potentially cancel the July and or maybe one of the August ones, depending on if the July one is canceled. Um if not, then I my my intent would be that we would have the July twenty third might get canceled, August thirteenth or August twenty seventh, but maybe one or two of them, but not all of them. Just so we have a check in. Does that feel like a reasonable path forward for members of the group, since I think we'll have quarms at all of them?
Yes. For sure.
Okay.
Okay, I know this will probably depend too on what happens with um forty A.
Yeah, yeah, I anticipate that depending on what happens with three A and or the bylaw review and if there's anything that we need to get on the get on the books.
Yep.
Okay, um next one I have is, so I've got a couple unanticipated. Um I wanted to to turn it over to Matt for a second related to Affordable Housing Trust uh that you are representing the planning board on. Um my understanding is that meetings have started, but I don't know how much of a update in terms of next steps.
Yeah, we've had three meetings so far. The first meeting was basically a introduction to everyone. Um and a breakdown of the scope of what we would be doing. That was basically chaired by uh Steve Mayo. The second meeting was we had a walkthrough at the Herd School um because one of the ideas floated right now is to see about um disposal of the Herd School and the potential uses that it could be. So uh we had a quick walkthrough with some of the members. Uh and we Uh, and we kind of rehashed what originally was proposed, the big, um. The big takeaway from that is that we want to get a lot of input from the residents around it before anything is moved forward, so. Nothing is really set in stone or anything, we're we're just, this is one of Steve's, um. Points that he want to get moving forward on the trust, um, we have, the the trust has. About a million dollars worth of funds that, um, are at. Our disposal, there are different ways that we could use that money, one of them would be to the development of the herd school. I don't think a million dollars is really going to go very far. Um, the other poor, you know, and then we're just just been discussing. What we could do with that money, whether it be rental assistance or something like that, so. Um, we're still working that out, the third meeting, uh, at that point, we basically. Uh, elected a chair, uh, vice chair and the officers. And now we're just setting, waiting for our next meeting to be scheduled, so right now there's really nothing pressing that needs to be done. There are some uh upper funds that there is a uh. Sunsetting provision in there, so we'll need to spend, I think, about two hundred thousand dollars. I'm not sure the exact date, I think by the end of the year, so we're going to be working on that of how that money is going to be uh distributed and. What the best use is for that, so basically that's it, not not a lot going on right now.
Okay, we'll uh, we'll put it on the books to to follow up later uh later this year and just to check in. Um, and then. Last thing I have is uh Town Day, so uh Jen McDonald from from Town Staff reached out. Uh, Town Day is going to be on uh Sa- Saturday, September twenty-first from one to four. Um, so, and then there's a rain date for Saturday, September twenty-eighth. Uh, and I can't recall, I think, did we plan on participating last year before it was rained out? Um, do we have anyone who wants to volunteer to be uh represent the planning board, and I can't remember what materials did we have to get? Ready for that?
It, um, it depends, before when we've planned, we've had, um, a simple like. Introduction to the planning board and what the planning board does, um, zoning maps, that type of stuff and how we interact. Um, I think the last one, and Theo, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, you and Aaron were planning for the master plan. Had some information for that, what the master plan was all about. So, and and maybe, and this was part of my question for Sam, maybe it's a little bit about the housing production plan or. Something like what we're trying to accomplish, I don't know. We have some time to figure that out.
I'm happy to help with any of that and getting some things together, um, if anybody is interested in having me work on something like that, like you suggested, Bill. Just keep me posted, let me know what you'd like to do.
Okay, thanks. Jim, you're muted.
We have to submit our application to the town by August sixteenth, so we have a little bit of time.
Uh, so we would have a a booth tent type thing. Right, I I think when we've done this in the past, I've used my tent. I can't remember, um, it's been a while since the last one was rained out and we didn't have one, I think, the year before, I, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, when the the one time we did it, um, in my memory, we shared a table with the ZBA and that worked out nicely.
That's right.
And and maybe even we want to, maybe we want to do it like a three-way with, um, the bylaw review committee too, um. So.
I was thinking with with the timing, it might make sense to have something promoting a public hearing about three A.
Mm-hmm.
I don't even know by that deadline, but if possible, that could be good.
We can have twelve tents with twelve different maps and people can just put tickets into which one they like the most.
I was thinking cornhole, like if you get it in, you get to vote, you know, for a map.
Wherever we are in that process, I am also happy to to work on putting some things together to table for that.
Okay. I'm sorry to, I'm not trying to make light of it, Jim, but what do we need to do for the actual application, is there anything we need to commit to or is it just saying yes?
Uh, it looks like it's essentially, we have to say that we, um. We've essentially said yes, reading the application right now, so. Members, if if we think that we definitely want to to have a presence and then we'll figure it out what that looks like, then we can. Get that submitted or we can wait until, we said, we have enough time between now and then, we can, we can think about it, I'll, I can push this out to the. Balance of the board.
Thanks, one one last comment, I think. This is something that I think our board's been trying to do for a long time, and I know Aaron picked it up from Paul and. Hopefully Sam's going in the same direction that there is a lack of communication between our boards and. That if we do, especially with the ZBA Conservation Commission, if we could get two or three tents or whatever spaces together. To have that type of community, um, and it will give us a chance to speak with each other too, so. Maybe that's one of those opportunities that we take advantage of.
Noted, yeah, I think Sam and I have started that, trying to figure out, we've started thinking about that as a. Trying to get those chairman meetings back as a regular cadence. Um, that's all I had, uh, anyone else have any other items that they wanted to discuss?
There was that one last comment to Sam, and you don't have to speak about it if you don't, but I just wanted to give her kudos for. A well-presented housing production plan, she definitely like just stated the why. And provide the how and some information in between, it was just really good to hear, um, and I hope that. Has an impact on the town council and it it, yeah, it's important, so thank you, Sam.
You're here.
Yep.
Okay, uh, anyone else have any other comments? Uh, hearing none, uh, could I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, mo- motion by Theo, do you hear a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Theo, seconded by Matt, uh, roll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
And myself, yes, so thank you all for the time and have a great night.
Thank you, thank you.